Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, July 24th, 2018. So I will lead through the agenda. We may take some of these things out of order. I think it's going to be a pretty quick night.
You just jinxed it.
Miss me? Are you done? You weren't here last time, right? That's why I went so fast. Okay. At seven o'clock, we're going to do community input. I think we'll, from the looks of it, we'll be jumping right into the finance committee appointment. And then at 7:30, we will be continuing, we will be opening the continued hearing for the grand location for Bellows Hill Road from National Grid. At 7:45, we will continue our discussion of the fire chief's succession plan. At 8:30, we will discuss the complete streets project prioritization. At nine o'clock, discussion of the goals. 9:15, town administrators' report. 9:25, cemetery deeds. 9:30 appointments. 9:35, board selecting liaison reports. 9:45 minutes, and 9:50, we will not be going into executive session. And at 9:15, so at 9:45, we would be adjourning. So with that, I just want to state that, so Tim is out tonight, and I do have some notes as, and Jen has some notes on the town administrators' reports and on each of these discussion items that will come up. But he had a prior, prayer commitment. He's going to be with us tonight. And Alan is on vacation. Welcome back, Kate.
Thank you. Good to be back. Good to be able to be back.
It's good to have you back, cart and all.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Okay, so is there any community input? Am I all following you, Bob?
I don't blink.
All right, seeing none. We will move on to the finance committee appointment. We received an email from the FinCom, an appointment that they are requesting. And they unanimously voted in support of James being appointed to the finance committee.
So this, this'll still leave one opening, though, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint James Contatio, 85 Old East Street, I hope I pronounced correctly, to serve on the Finance Committee with a term expiration of June 30th, 2021.
Second? Okay.
I read his resume. It was very impressive.
Yeah. We are just so incredibly fortunate to get so many incredibly talented people to join our voice.
Especially the Board of Selectmen.
Did you miss me? FinCom is just an awesome committee. That's about over to my left. So there's a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Is unanimous? So I am going to go ahead and jump into the town administrators' report. So most of these are just informational. There are a couple of items that we need to make, take action on. So the first is the deer committee revolving fund. They've requested that the board authorize the town accountant to create the revolving fund for FY '19, for the administration of the new hunting, new hunting program. It will be funded entirely from the receipts from the sale of the hunting permits. Is, are there any, you're on the deer committee, right?
Yes.
Is any, you want to add anything?
No, just that we've got, we expect a full complement of 18 applicants, and there'll be a second notification in the mosquito shortly. And I think they already have half of the applications in, so they're moving right along. It's, they're creating signage, figuring out the schedule for getting the signs up, et cetera. Everything's on schedule.
Great. Any further, anything else?
So I move that the board recommend that the town accountant create a new fiscal year '19 revolving account pursuant to Mass. General Law 44, 53 E and a half, to receive receipts for the sale of deer, bow hunting permits, for the purpose of paying expenses relative to the administration of said program under the supervision of the Conservation Commission.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. So last, last week, it was, I think I'm getting this right, last week, Tim, or last, two weeks ago, Tim said that there had been capital expenditure appropriated with the state. And what needs to happen now is lots of support and nudging from the town to, actually, I guess the funding is approved but not appropriated is the right way of putting it. So what we need to do now is get it appropriated. And so what he did was he attached two letters to this, and anybody else who wants to do so, you know, we can coordinate through Tim and just make sure that they're hearing from us as much as possible. The money has been approved. That means only that the state can appropriate it. It doesn't mean at all that they have any inclination to appropriate it.
So should we, as Board of Selectmen, send a letter as well, then? Or do you think as individuals, send it? Individuals, Michael, what are you thinking?
I think it would be good if we did it as a Board of Selectmen. And what I can do is just...
We did send two letters from the Board already.
Oh, these are signed to him.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, yes.
So if we could get these as a board document?
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind sending them out, and then we could use this as the template for our own. And are these normally mailed or emailed?
Both.
Okay, so if we could get the email addresses, that would be great. And just call, we have so much time.
I think the fire chief said he was going to send along as well.
Yeah, the chief should hope so.
Yes, he did say he was going to. So if he'll send those over to us, and then we can, we can all, all send them. I prefer just to email it. All right, so Supreme Court decision in the Janus case.
Yeah.
That's also attached here. So it's just an advisory from the Attorney General that recently the Supreme Court said that public employees who do not wish to be a member of the union do not have to pay what's called an agency fee.
And I think his report should ring with no such...
I think that there's a typo in here, because it says, to my knowledge, we have such public employees, but now, but it could impact down the road. So I think, I think it meant no such employees, so that it really doesn't impact us right now, but it certainly could if we did have that type of employee, right? And then on to number four, which is the big one. Do you want to take this one, Jen? This is the, which, this is the one that you really, we really need to do tonight, right? The electoral warrant?
Yes, the town clerk.
So we've been asked to sign eight originals for the state primary election, so they can be posted here. And the state primary election is Tuesday, September 4th, which is the day after the Labor Day holidays.
Calvin's taking a lot of heat for that date. We'll see how that goes.
And there were five to decide.
Yeah.
And it did come from, from Mary Farley, so.
And it says here, she...
This is what she provides. And it makes sense, too, because I normally do that. I will do that for the end of the year.
Okay.
And so I will date it.
Well, you do something, you have a motion to do that.
Okay, so.
So is there a motion for the board to sign the warrant for the posting of the state primary election to be held on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Is that an okay motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. While that's been signed for August 14th, because we were, we are not having the executive session tonight, we will have it on August 14th, and that is to discuss litigation and the administrator appointment.
And if I may, the liquor license transfer preference has been received today. We've scheduled that for 7:30 on 14th.
Okay. Do you know what time we did?
7:30.
You just said that, didn't you? It's not letting your tongue. I guess I'd like to just add goals in here again. Just keep pushing them forward. All right, so that's it for the town administrator report.
Cemetery deeds? We're back here?
Yeah, let's go on to cemetery deeds. You're so far away. Katie. All right, so we have two. The number 714 and 715. One is for balcony, and one is for slums.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Sully Alcone, 532 North Hill Road at Green Cemetery, Lot D 212, Graves 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to James F. Sloan at 1286 Kerr Street at Green Cemetery, D 235, Graves 3 and 5.
Three and four.
Sorry, three and four. Boy, maybe I am a little concussed, what do you think?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
There's another copy of the warrant for each of our things, so we can probably do the six, seven, and eight, right? If we each have one.
Yeah, I have one here, it's fine.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to appointments. We have another appointment. The FinCom appointment, and then we have a Recreation Commission appointment. And this is recommended by the Recreation Commission.
Here.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Courtney Bittawari, just to serve on the Recreation Commission with a term expiration of June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any further discussion? Again, it's awesome that we get so many really great people serving on these commissions, these committees and commissions. I'm just looking to see, this is, this will fill the Recreation Commission for normal members. Anybody wants to be an alternate, certainly could.
Yeah, Rick, I'm gonna cut down after a number here.
Wow, yeah, long time.
Yeah, long time, sure.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous.
Moving right along here.
Yeah, second here.
Are we gonna have a trust meeting anytime soon?
First meeting where?
Trust, are we gonna have a trust meeting?
Finish quarter?
Yeah.
It just started, but yeah, we'll have one, we'll have one a quarter, yeah.
That'll all the way down.
Two members shy right now.
Significant.
I think mine's really good. Maureen.
All right. Let's move on to the minutes of July 10th, 2018.
I gave two very small typos to Jen, so I move approval of the minutes of, I'll find them in here, Tuesday, July 10th, 2018, as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, it's first and second. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Did you say aye, Kate?
I did. Normally abstained, but you know.
It's unanimous.
Yes.
Okay. We are cruising through this, minutes, not gonna do that. So let's go ahead and, so we're expecting a presentation at 8:30 for the complete streets? Complete streets? Okay. I expect that we'll have people here for the fire chief, and we can't start until 7:30 for the Bellows Hill, so let's move on to board selecting goals and liaisons, which I just had out here. So as we discussed last time, in our goal, our goal for goals, if we want to call them goals, or agenda, or whatever we want to call it, our tasks for the year was to simplify it, make them really achievable, and then just kind of hold ourselves accountable to them by following up, I would say, every couple months, just to make sure that we're making progress. The, is, Jen, is this, is this one here the one that I had emailed, or is this last year's?
Did you email that to you?
That's last, oh.
Yeah.
That was last year's, I think.
Okay, so mine aren't here. But that's okay. So, and then I'm assuming, Kate, that these are yours?
Those are mine.
Okay.
I have others that I could add, but I'm trying to keep it.
Do you want to email them to me right now? Can you do a thing for, and I'll go thinking?
You missed this one.
It would be pretty buried in my email and take me a while to find it. It was like four weeks ago now, right? Two weeks ago, three weeks ago. If we, I can go off of, what is this?
It's just one more of the warrants for the...
It's a warrant that somebody missed. Oh, Nate, Nathan didn't do these either, so that's all right, just give me that one. Nathan, you'll sign these later, I take it?
Yeah, Nathan doesn't sign any of them.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's just jump into this. First of all, I think it's pretty critical that, and I know that Alan isn't here, but I think that we need to start getting some liaisons going, so that we're not missing a lot of movements. You know, for, you know, for me, I'm fine being on all the same ones that I was on. I'm also fine moving if anybody wants anything that I was on.
So that's my opportunity to say, you were on FinCom and the Financial Management Team, and I, actually, I went to all of those, so.
I think that actually we officially swapped.
So can I have those officially?
I think that we actually officially swapped me off of those, yes.
Oh, did we? All right, okay.
It just wasn't updated.
Oh, all right, so I would like the FinCom, you know, all those financial babies.
So I do think it makes sense for there to be two. Do you want to be on it with her, or do you want me to be on it?
If you, yeah, want to be on it. I was gonna say, you can take my spot, Kate, but if you've already taken Nathan's, then Nathan, you can take mine, if you want. Because I think it makes sense to have the chair as part of it, you know? I think chair, vice chair, make a lot of sense.
Okay, so it'll be Nathan, Kate.
Okay.
So that's, for three of them, I've just changed it on, right?
Yeah, and then...
Audit committee, too.
Audit as well.
Audit. Okay.
And we can, you know, we can move these around if Alan feels really, really strongly that he would like one. Any other movement that you want to make, Kate?
Well, I, I didn't do any of the Carlisle Public School with Luke, but I would like to stay there anyway. I'd eventually like to get a little more active there. Let me see, and the Municipal Facilities Committee, I guess I was on with Claude, I'd like to keep that.
I can take Claude's spot.
Municipal Facilities Committee, it was actually me, I was on it.
Yeah, well, yes, you were, actually, but...
And you have been appointed to it by us, right, already? I think that we swapped it out, so that I was no longer on it, and you're on it now.
Ah, okay, well, then, all right.
So I think that you're...
Because what I was on was the long-term caps.
Right. I was actually the... I think that last time, you were saying, well, there's such a great, a big connection between long-term caps and that.
Yes, right.
And so I stepped off as a board, as a member. When we, when we appointed that whole slate?
Okay.
I stepped off, and you stepped in.
Okay.
So that you're, you're actually now on the committee.
So I need to go get sworn in for that.
But... Yeah, so I think that you're actually officially on the committee, not even just a liaison.
All right, so that's, so that, so I should take myself off, then, as liaison.
Well, no, we'll just keep you on as liaison, and you're everything, so we'll just...
So this is member of muni, member, and of the long term, which I already was a member. Okay. All right, good.
Carrie?
I think I, well, same as, same as, same-o, same-o, basically. And I think I sent you something with my druthers a couple of weeks ago, and I can't remember. I think the only other thing was probably school committee that I have not been involved in, and like Kate, I'd like to get, just get a better understanding of everything having to do with the school. That's a big void in my knowledge.
Yeah, I think you want, you said COA.
COA.
You're on.
CCTV.
Deer Committee.
Deer Committee.
You said Finance.
Yeah, druthers for Finance.
Senior Tax Advisory Committee.
Yep.
CCTV School Committee, Housing Authority, and Library.
Oh, so you're gonna take Housing Authority, and I'll get off that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's gonna be Carrie. And then Library is currently who?
Library was, well, I did a lot of their meetings, but I think you also, Carrie?
Yeah.
Went to a few of them.
Do we need two on that, or do you want to stay two, or?
Probably don't need to, I wouldn't think.
They're going to be getting a new librarian.
Yeah.
I'm happy to do it. It's up to you, Carrie.
We'll leave it both. It was both last year. It seemed to work. So you, you said School Committee, we already have two on that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to stay on school, just because we're doing the contracting.
Yes, I think you should.
And, and part of it, though, is I honestly think, you know, I've been talking with David Modell for a while, I was chair, and I haven't talked to him recently, but I think we do need to have more regular meetings where we have the School Committee or a member of the School Committee in to talk to the board, because it is such a huge, you know, percentage of our town budget. And, you know, I think they have a lot of the same ideas and thoughts that we do, and, you know, I think we need to figure out creative ways to, you know, work on the budget, and and I, you know, they're totally receptive to that. You know, everybody, everybody realizes it's just such a huge burden to the town. Maybe burden is the right word, but tax burden, I should say. So I, you know, I think having them in a little more regularly would be a huge benefit to everybody.
So...
I was just looking to see if Alan sent me...
We're gonna have to go over this one more time, because I think we've been kind of scattershot here. And I noticed that I had Board of Appeals and Board of Assessors, with whom I did nothing last year. So if we want to have that better covered, maybe somebody else should do that. And Claude was Board of Health.
That's probably Alan. Is he even, he's still on it, isn't he?
Alan, yeah, so maybe Alan would be good for that, yeah.
We have, we have your preferences now, right? Because we're not to fill it in. Because we're not to fill it in, I just want to make sure I'm getting everybody's preferences in.
Okay.
Do you have any preferences?
Yeah, I'm fine with the stuff that I've been on. One of the things that I would like to be on is pathways. I mean, we, they've been informally keeping me in the loop on everything. Their meetings are in the middle of the day sort of thing, but, you know, Claude was the rep there, so...
Anybody else want to have, what, anybody want to say anything?
No.
All right.
And then, you know, I also, I don't mind doing crack or land stewardship, so conservation restriction advisory committee, but we can figure those out, but those are both Claude's.
Those are all yours. That's my daily work.
Okay, how about if we leave those open and just keep it to Alan once?
Yeah, yeah, certainly fine, yeah. But I'm fine with everything else that I'm already...
It's mostly like finance and, you know, public safety that I really want to make sure that we get, some assignments and the school committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about public works? Nathan, you were on that, did you?
Yeah, that's kind of public safety, I'm happy to be on that, that fire department, police department, public works.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Well, yeah, well, then there's your household, see who said household.
Household recycling committee.
Recycling, that was Claude, wasn't it?
Yes.
No interest in that.
So, that kind of goes with public works, too, possibly, or not. Or it goes with energy task force and...
I think it's more energy task force, well, energy task force is its own thing.
Well, and they've been tasked with looking into transfer station, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, so that's why I'm saying that they...
I don't think they were officially been tasked with it.
Who? Oh, yes, no, we did.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we asked for a report and we gave them a date.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot what the date was, but yeah.
I think it was November.
It's sometime in the fall.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and they're, yeah, they're hot to trot, they're all excited.
All right, so shall we just quickly just run through these? And again, if it's Claude and it's only Claude, if you really want it, go ahead and grab it. If not, let's just leave it open until Alan's here.
And force it on Alan.
And then all of these will be open again for Alan when he gets back, you know, it's up for negotiation again, but I just want to get some names out to people. So, we have the audit committee is Nathan and Kate, board of appeals is Kate, board of assessors is Kate, board of health is unassigned.
I'm just giving that out.
Yeah, I think Alan.
Building inspection, we're just going to give it to him?
Yeah, just give it to him.
All right. Building inspection services is Nathan, Carlisle Public Schools is Luke and Kate, CCHS is Carrie, CCTV is Carrie, community preservation act committee is Luke, communications center is Nathan, conservation commission is Luke, council on aging is Carrie, department of public works is Nathan, energy task force committee is Claude, finance committee is Nathan and Kate, finance director Nathan and Kate, financial management team Nathan and Kate, fire department is Luke and Nathan, historical commission is unassigned, housing authority is Carrie, household recycling committee is unassigned, library Carrie and Kate, long-term caps is Carrie and Kate.
I'm the member, he's the liaison.
Pathways two is Luke, personnel board is Carrie and Kate, planning board is Kate, police department is Luke and Nathan, recreation commission is Luke, technology is Bill Rissow, town accountant's Bill Rissow, I'm seeing if you're listening.
I'm listening.
Let's see, recreation commission is Luke, technology is Nathan and Kate, town accountant is Luke and Kate, town clerk is Luke and Nathan, veterans commission, committee is Kate, dog committee is Luke, deer committee is Carrie, facilities committee is Kate, agricultural commission is Kate, center park standing committee is Carrie, conservation restriction advisory committee is unassigned, land stewardship committee is unassigned, scholarship advisory committee is Carrie, and senior tax advisory committee is Carrie.
Okay, I have suitcase for crack.
Oh, yeah, I was going to do crack and land stewardship, but we're going to leave them empty until...
Yeah.
Yeah, in case Alan won.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody okay with that for now?
For now.
All right, so you can reach out to your committees and let whoever you are your liaison. I am going to go ahead at this point and adjust to open the public hearing. So, if I find it.
Number three.
Okay, so I am going to go ahead, it being seven something, seven thirty-six, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, National Grid Grant of Locations, Bellows Hill Road. And as you all may remember, this was a public hearing that we opened last meeting to extend the gas main up, up Bellows Hill Road, I'm forgetting what, I think it was one twenty-seven to two twenty-two, or... I'm forgetting off the top of my head, but it was...
Two eleven.
Two eleven?
Yeah.
It's a one twenty-five to two eleven, it's pretty close. And there was nobody from National Grid in attendance, so I continued the public hearing. And so, I guess I will ask now if there's anybody here to present or to discuss the grant of locations for Bellows Hill Road for gas main.
I can't tell you, I've placed several phone calls and several emails, no response.
Okay.
And I think Tim spoke to town council, and he said that the board was inclined to...
Yeah, I guess that there's, there's some issues going on right now with, but, so, so, you know, we have reached out to them, and I think what I am going to do right now is I am just going to entertain a motion that, that the board of selectmen vote to deny the permit based on the fact that nobody showed.
Actually, we need to close the open hearing first before we do our discussion and have our vote, seems to me.
Okay.
I believe that's the order of procedure.
Does anybody want to discuss anything before I close the public hearing?
Well, we're not supposed to discuss anything before open hearing.
That's not true, this is, I mean, anybody, any people here...
Is to take in facts.
People are here to be able to participate.
Okay, if they want to bring us facts, they can, but we can't discuss.
And we're welcome to, that's not true, we can discuss. But, so, anybody want to, anybody have any input? Not here for Bellows Hill Road?
I guess I could make a comment, but I don't know whether it sheds any light on National Grid's application, but their, the residence at two eleven has applied to the fire department for underground LFE storage tanks. The maximum limit on a residential property under the state regulation is two thousand gallons, which they requested three thousand gallon storage for propane, because they don't have a gas service. That, the two thousand gallon permit has been issued, but in order to exceed that capacity under the regulations, it requires a license granted by the board of selectmen, so the homeowners, along with the contractor, would need to come to the board and present their plan, which would be reviewed by the fire chief and other public safety officials for comment and recommendation back to the board for the granting of the license. That's a lot of propane on a residential property in the area that doesn't have, you know, good water supply, so that's just a comment I'm making. I think that's probably what's happening for at least two eleven for their solution for their gas service, and I understand...
Rather than this, I think?
Right, I understand that, you know, a generator was put in, they have a pool, there are many different needs for gas supply at that residence. So, that's in progress with, I don't believe the work's been completed, but it has been permitted for two thousand gallons of underground storage.
For two thousand?
Two thousand.
Because they haven't seen it for three thousand, okay.
Right, I haven't seen anything come forward, and Tim, Tim did confer with town council regarding the procedure for that, because it's very rare to ask for a license for storage. I've not seen that in my years, in that quantity. Usually, it's industrial, you know, type thing, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for grant of location for Bellows Hill Road from National Grid. And now we can chat.
Well, I think since our major job here is to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the town, and given some of the letters and documents that we were presented, that kind of put that into question, whether the work would be safely done. And also, if we were to allow this, which I'm not inclined to do, I would certainly want it to be bonded as per section twenty-six of our regulations of the Town of Carlisle Department of Public Works regulations, paragraph eighteen and nineteen, which requires bonding of any work done in our public ways, so...
Yes. And we talked about that last time, about, I think, the question that we asked was, well, how do we know how much to ask for?
Well, in fact, that would, it's like, planning board, what we do is we ask them to hire a consulting engineer on our behalf, and that gets part rolled into their costs, and then they do all the inspections for us to make sure everything's done in the proper way.
Okay. I guess I feel like nothing's been presented, so we have nothing really to decide. I mean, there's no reason to grant a permit if the applicant does not show or respond to him.
Yeah.
Carrie?
I agree.
And we have overwhelming safety concerns.
James, what?
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so I move that we deny the permit.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Five minutes, anybody want to give a liaison report?
Yes.
Great.
I would like to. I'd like to report on the Center Park, which we probably haven't heard a whole lot about for a while. As just, everybody may recall, last year at the, after the Center Park Standing Committee basically resigned at the end of October, we were looking for ways to not let the park just go to seed, and we looked at three or four alternatives, including just letting the DPW mow, mow the lawn there and, and letting everything else go to seed. And one of the options we had was to basically give responsibility back to the founder of the park, who was very interested in keeping it going, and even though she doesn't, she no longer lives in Carlisle, was eager to assume that role, re-assume that role, and had been the primary fundraiser and the prime mover to making the park what it is today. Eleven years in the baking, and it's still very beautiful. Up till last year, all of the funding had been through private donations, and one of the things that happened when the standing committee was appointed was that they were unclear about their role in fundraising, the money didn't come in as it had in the past, they basically asked the selectmen to provide some funds for the first time in ten years to help maintain the park. And the board of selectmen approved at town, recommended in a town meeting, approved, I think, four thousand, was it four thousand or?
Six.
Six thousand dollars for the maintenance of the park, so that was made available to the standing committee, what was left of the standing committee. They were very careful in spending, and they spent down by about two or three thousand dollars, remainder, remained in, in the account, as did the remainder of private donations. So, there's enough money there to basically get them started with spring cleanup this year, and have the founder basically in solo orchestrate the cleanup, work with Tim Goddard to get money expended as was requested, to hire various people to do various maintenance functions. So, that's all taking place. Tim has worked very comfortably with the founder, it's been a good relationship according to both of them. The park looks wonderful and is a treasure, and no further funding, public money has been spent on the park. But the responsibility was given back to the founder with the understanding that if there was no public support and private donations to fund or continue the maintenance, that she would be, she would step aside at the end of this calendar year. And then the park would presumably have a very unforeseen future beyond that point, beyond perhaps getting the grass grow, mowed by the DPW folks. So, that's where we are. The founder has recently received another check in her fundraising activities for a thousand dollars. She still has not garnered any kind of community support to lend a hand. People will write checks, but they won't get in there and become a member of the Friends of the Park for not, in a formal way, to establish a not-for-profit corporation to fund it. So, it's, it sits there in a very tenuous situation. It's beautiful, it's very well maintained, it has the care and love of the founder supporting it, and virtually is costing the town nothing at this point to keep it maintained. But until and unless you can get some community support, the future is uncertain. So, if anyone listening to this meeting is interested in helping in that regard, I'd say it would be, given the amount of community service that high school students have to do, and given all the, the folks that, gardeners in town that appreciate what's been done there, I think there could be enough community support, and certainly enough private funding support to continue it the way it's been with an appropriate group of folks that would be, assume the responsibility of saying, yes, we're here to support Center Park because it's a real asset to the town. So, that's where it is, it's still in, as it always has been, in need of broad support beyond financial support to keep it going. And so, anyone who's interested, please contact Tim Goddard, contact, you can contact me. Sabrina Perry has been undaunted in her support and, of the park as, as it enters its eleventh, eleventh full year. So, that's, that's all I know, but if anyone has any interest in seeing it maintained in perpetuity in the future, come forward and make that known, and I'm sure we can find a way to organize to make that happen.
Right, yeah, and just to reiterate what you're saying, it's, you know, that the financial backing is incredibly important, but the volunteer activity is equally as important in order for us to continue to maintain Center Park. So, we really, really need a Friends of type group who will own and maintain, well, not own, but maintain the park. Thank you, Carrie.
Excuse me, do you, do you know if the founder made any headway into establishing a 503C? Because that was, as I recall, what she was specifically tasked to do, she was supposed to...
She's been advised not, that that's not needed, that she doesn't need to do that, so she's not pursuing that at all at this point.
All right.
I don't know who's giving her that advice, but... I don't know who's giving her that advice, but she has a, she has a significant area that's.
Counted to what we asked her to do.
That's helping, you know, sort of with it, but yes, it is counted, all we have to do.
Anybody outside? Liaison reports, we'll just get through it, and then we'll jump onto.
You've heard a snippet from the Deer Committee that they're on track, so that's about, you know.
No, nothing later, I can, I can wait.
Okay.
I should say that, that it's likely that half the applicants for deer permits will come from outside of Carlisle, at the rate that they're going, yes.
Half of them?
Yeah, and that's, that's consistent with the hunting that's going on, has gone on in private lands in the past, where the private landowners give it permission to bull hunt on their property. It's a bit, half and half people in town, people from out of town.
All right, let's move on to the Fire Chief's succession plan. Okay, we still have in, in our pocket the MRI proposal, and. Have we went on to be yelling? It actually works really well, this way, because then you're always kind of on the mic. So I think there were a few things, Kate, so we went through this last, two weeks ago, we kind of talked about a strategy. There were a couple of things that were kind of next steps. You know, we, we agreed that we should create a, a committee to find or, and propose a Fire Chief. And we also agreed that we should hire a consultant company to help us with that search. Yes, it was a search committee and a search consultant.
Right.
And, so Tim has reviewed proposals from search committees, and he is proposing that we would select MRI. We also talked, kind of, all four of us here, you know, Bert and Deputy White and Chief Flannery, we chatted about kind of like what the next steps would be. I think one of the things was for you all to think about, if there's a regular firefighter, who might that be on the committee? And, and also an officer who might be on the committee? I think I had thrown out there the possibility that this is like a seven-person committee with a much, or not, maybe not much, but a larger group of people, more inclusive of the members of the Fire Department as part of the interview process, but not necessarily a part of the search committee. So there's two people who were not here last time, do you have any, any questions or comments?
No, I think it would just be a.
Okay.
No, I think it makes sense to use.
And I think as a side thing, there was, you know, I think, there was a question of, you know, well, should we, you know, go ahead and start drafting a job description? And I said, sure, you know, we should draft a job description, so I had, you sent me a job description from a recent posting. But, you know, just to kind of get that going ahead of time, we're really under the gun here, and, you know, so, you know, one of the things that I suggested was that, you know, we're, we're talking about this every single Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah.
With the committee.
Yeah, okay.
So, any, do you have any questions or anything, Katie? Just kind of get up to speed questions.
I guess the only thing, question I had was about strong or not strong.
Uh-huh. Okay.
And where that puts in the whole process.
Yeah, we can discuss that. Let's, let's start with just the search committee.
Otherwise, the search committee, from that point of view, I have, I concur, I think that sounds like a very good plan, I think it's very important to have consultants working with us, and I think seven members are manageable. So, I think all that sounds good.
Okay. Anything? Anything that you all want to add, particularly to update?
You mentioned the company that did the last thing, that you've decided to use them again, the MRI, is that what you just said?
Uh, well, that's what, that's what, we're going to discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything to add, anything that maybe you, I'll make sure Kate can do it now before.
I did solicit to the Department for Regular Firefighters, which is a smaller group, there's only ten now, and I do have a candidate to propose to, which is Matt Herwick, who's a relatively new regular firefighter.
Okay. Can you spell his last name?
H-E-R-W-E-C-K.
And have you talked to Matt?
Yes.
Okay. So, looking at this, I'm just, I'm looking at Tim's notes, but I've already put the minutes away, so I'm, I'm pretty sure that this matches. We were talking about two selectmen, to which Alan requested to be one, Tim Goddard. I think somebody we didn't talk about, which I think is potentially a good idea, would be Chief Fisher, because they'll be working closely together. Fire Department, so if it, let's just, let's just say it's Matt, as a regular Fire Department, and then we talked about it being an officer or one of you.
All right.
You're okay with that? Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, he did talk to, yes, he did talk to me about it.
Sometimes that doesn't happen.
So, I just want to clarify with Matt, so the, the regular firefighters were polled and Matt volunteered?
I, I solicited to the, to the group, correct.
All right.
Yes, yeah, and I had three responses, and I selected Matt.
And what was, you know, what, what, so if there, if there were three people who were interested, what, what made us focus in on Matt?
I think that his, his recent appointment as a regular auxiliary, as a regular firefighter moving from an auxiliary, his background in firefighting when he was in the Marine Reserves, and his enthusiasm and willingness to, to help in whatever way he can in this process, so.
And, sorry, how long has he been on?
Um, I think it's three now, going into his fourth year.
And then there's still, there's still one citizen at large, we talked about a citizen at large.
Bill Russell?
I'm not gonna speak for Bill Russell, he's shaking his head.
He's shaking his head, no.
Probably gone a month or two, so.
We'll draft it.
So I guess, we need a citizen at large, or, I guess I would propose it could be another, no, we need a citizen at large.
So, what about somebody from Planning Board, since they have dealings with the, I'm just throwing that out there, Fire Department for, you know, laying out roads and things like that?
Yeah.
I don't know, just trying to find some sort of connection.
Has Chief Fisher been asked?
I believe so. So, I think it would make sense for the other person to be either you or me, because we're the liaisons. Well, paper scissors? I would, I would, I would enjoy being one, so.
Oh, hold on.
It's, it's super, it's super important, I care.
Yeah, no, it really is important.
Yeah, I didn't even try to say it. Okay, so we have. Nathan, Alan, Tim, John Fisher, Bert.
Matt.
Matt.
And a citizen at large.
And a citizen at large. How do we come up with a citizen at large?
Advertise the mosquito?
It was in last time, probably.
Was it?
I don't know. No?
Not that specific.
No, it just mentioned, but didn't solicit someone to step forward.
I can send out something on the news and announcements to anybody who's subscribed to the website.
Yeah.
Because the next mosquito is out this week, and then it's two more weeks after that, till the next one.
Right. All right, so why don't we do this, why don't we go ahead and appoint these people, and then maybe what we can do is get together and talk about how we would go about getting somebody, and, and, you know, maybe, maybe there's somebody else that we can, some other way we can fill that role and come back to the board to make, make a suggestion on that other one, but we don't lose time.
We'll pick up your request in my room.
Okay, thanks.
So contact you.
Uh-huh, great, thank you. All right, so is there?
Need a motion?
I do need a motion to appoint these people to the Fire Chief Search Committee.
Was there a question?
Yeah, anybody have anything to add?
My question was, what's the, what's the objective of the citizen at large? What, what is that person gonna bring to your search committee?
We, we generally just try to get citizens at large because they're, they're often not, you know, sometimes there's particular opinions based upon different committees that somebody may be on, and it's good just to try to get that broad, just bring in a citizen and, and get them involved in it. It's also a good way to trap people into being on future committees.
Thanks.
And also, what sometimes happens is you get somebody in town that has this kind of unique experience directly related to what you're looking for, I mean, like we saw with the Communications. It, it's really kind of nice, you know, I mean, it doesn't always happen, but sometimes you really lock up, and, you know, I mean, it happened with the school committee, the building committee, I mean, it just, every once in a while, somebody will be like, yeah, you know, because it's a short-term thing typically, and, yeah, so hopefully, we'll get somebody that.
If we don't have somebody in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna have to rethink what that makeup is, so that we have seven people.
So I move that we establish a Fire Chief Search Committee with seven members, and that we appoint Alan and Nathan as the two selectmen members, Tim Goddard, Chief Fisher, Matt Herwick as a Fire Department, and Bert as Fire Department members, and one citizen at large to be named.
Okay, is there a second?
You, you chief and myself?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
That is the committee, that's seven people.
That's the committee, that's the search committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we have a search committee, now let's talk about the MRI proposal. So, I really don't want to lose time here. Yeah, I, and, and Tim recommends that, you know, we, we make a selection now. I just want to ask if we feel the risk is too high for us to have the search committee review this before we select them as the consultant.
At what risk are you thinking about?
Uh, timeframe.
Oh, time, the risk of delaying the timeframe.
We can't hire them then until August twenty-fourth.
Right.
Because that's our next meeting.
It's, yeah, it's.
And so, unless we had, I'm just checking to make sure that that is our next meeting. Why is it? August eighteenth.
It's on the back of my agenda.
Fourteenth. August fourteenth, so that's.
Three weeks.
It's a lot of time.
It's a lot of time.
Yeah, but we can always have a quick meeting, though.
We could. With three days' notice, yep.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I think it'd be good to have the people who are gonna be working with the, you know, the, the search committee, that's gonna be working with the consultant to actually review the proposal, and maybe even the proposals. Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't, I don't see any harm in waiting and having a search committee review this as well. I mean, as long as it's not dragged out for the full three weeks.
Right. What do you think, Bert?
I, I think that's a good idea. How strong was Tim's recommendation? Was it like, this is overwhelmingly, these are the people we should choose, or they're all pretty equal, and they're, since we've worked with them, they're slightly higher on the list?
Their client list was overwhelming.
Yeah, here's the, the reference.
And they were the, and they were the little better.
And they were a little, I mean, they did Acton, Brookline.
Is this the same organization that did the study here previous?
I think MRI is the same one that did it previously.
I think the group needs to have a discussion of this, past experience with that politicized event that happened in this town. It was very salient. And if organization has a lot of background that is negative, that goes with national in this state and beyond, illegal activities from the person who owns it.
Yeah, did you see the other proposals?
I have not.
Yeah, we've only seen this one.
Yeah, this is. And so that's, that's why I'm, I'm suggesting, I think it's personally, I think, maybe I didn't say it strongly enough, I think it's worth the risk.
Yeah.
To wait so that the search committee.
Especially if there seems to be some question. It's more than worth the risk.
It was Tim, but I think, you know, it, it would be good to see, it would be, you know, we just set up the committee, you know, maybe that committee, you know, can meet next week, or, and, and review this with, review all the proposals with Tim.
Okay.
That would be.
Sounds like a plan.
It kind of seems odd to, on the same day that you're selecting a committee, to also be selecting consultants that are gonna work with the committee, and they have no input. I understand that it's, we're really, really pressed for time, but it just seems odd to me. Okay, so, let's get together, oh, keep looking for Alan, let's get together as soon as we can. Jen, would you mind making sure that we get that scheduled? Because you, if somebody could send Matt's email to Janet? Oh, you already have it? Okay. Of course you do, you have everything. And we'll try to get together next week. Okay, so we're not going to decide on MRI today, and we have a good strategy going forward. And then, again, every, every Board of Selectmen meeting, I would like us to have an update on this, and not just as a liaison, we'll try to get as many from the search committee in the room as possible.
Yeah.
So that it's not just a standard liaison.
Yeah.
That way we're, we're providing input all the way along, and we don't get to the end and find that there's a problem.
Nice.
And transparency that goes with it is good.
Yes, yeah. All right.
I think that's been, was a major, and we'll look at the, you know, it may not be that the proposal's bad or anything, it may just be the working arrangement and, you know, transparency and inclusion.
Do you have the proposal?
Not yet. Not yet.
Well, yeah, Tim probably sent them all.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, we'll have it.
Are there any other proposals or do you have some?
I, I don't have any of the elements.
Yeah, we, we've only seen this one.
We've only seen this one. That's the only one that was in the packet last time too.
Yeah, which, you know, even though we trust him, it's.
It'd be good to see.
Yeah.
Yep.
More than one?
You can keep that, you don't have to read it.
I won't ask questions yet.
Anything else?
I just think the board of selectmen has to have a complete picture of this organization that worked in this town previously. And the issues in underground politics that happened in this town.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll chat about it at the, in the search committee and. Come back with a proposal.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you all very much. Thank you. That'd be great, thank you.
Nathan's the only one that has the.
Early morning options, we were. Seven, eight.
Five, nine.
Four thirty.
Alan's at C, right?
Is he?
I think so.
Yeah, Alan's at C right now.
Okay.
Doesn't mean he doesn't get wifi from time to time. It's complete streets, sorry, I've lost my, my agenda, so I'm gonna look at yours.
The only thing left is, uh, complete streets and.
Oh, we still haven't discussed our goals.
Oh, I already checked them off, though, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I received an email, um, from a resident, uh, and I think she'd emailed you or Tim. Um, I, I'll have to look at my email, but they, they want to set up a bin for clothes. Did you see that?
A bin for clothing.
Yeah, it, it has to do with donations, let me, let me find it.
Aren't there two at the transfer station?
Yeah, this is something to do with the school. And they, the, in order to have it at the school, I'll, I'll, I'll find it. In order to have it at the school, the company that's doing it wants to, or organization, I should say, that's doing it wants to have, um, two bins in town. I meant to talk to you about this prior to the meeting, uh, Bay State Textiles, so, um, they're, uh, so the PTO is looking to establish a new fundraiser. And they're exploring the possibility of having a collection bin for textiles at the school provided by an organization called Bay State Textiles, original. But, long story short, um, they'd like to place an additional collection bin in town to kind of make it worth their while. So, uh.
What were they proposing?
Well, that's the thing, so they wanted to come to the board of selectmen to determine if we had any problem with it. I guess ultimately, we would probably try to figure out where the second bin would be, because there'd be one at the school. Apparently, the school committee's fine with it. You know, so the idea would be where would the second one go?
I'm at two bins at the school.
There you go. Yeah, no, I think it's, they probably want multiple locations just for that. Oh, I don't want to go all the way to the school, it's two miles away, sort of thing. But, uh, but yeah, no, it's just, um, I received that email, so I wanted to pass along and see if people had ideas. You know, I think, because there already is something at the transfer station, right?
Yeah, this goodwill, is it?
Yeah. You know, so you don't really want to conflict with that. But, uh.
I'm assuming, though, if it's a textile thing, it's not, they're not necessarily clothing they're looking for. It's just for recycling and making into cotton paper or something.
Well, it could be, yeah, so.
So, I mean, you would, you know, there's lots of times where you have clothes that really are not usable.
Right.
And givable, re-reci-, you know, but they could be recycled into clothing, so, I mean, into, um, paper, so.
Right. Um, let me go to the website.
And if that were the case, it would not conflict.
Right.
Otherwise, firms might, um, of course, that's very close to the school. But it's more public and people might.
Different, different set of traffic, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe they should approach firms as a, and/or the library.
Yeah, so actually, they want usable clothing, because they export half of its clothing, donations and collections go to developing countries. Healthy to manufacture used clothing and shoes, so it.
Okay.
Yeah, they basically want usable stuff. I, it's one of those things I can, I can have them come in and discuss.
Yeah, I think unless we want to just, yeah, I, I think, I think we just add it to another.
Yeah, no, exactly, but yeah, no, I just want to toss it out there because, um, yeah.
Yeah, maybe you could ask them if they want to come on the fourteen?
Sure.
And if they do, we'll put it on the agenda?
Yeah. Yeah, it shouldn't be long. Yeah, I think that the thing was, you know, if we would be open to it, um, you know, or whether or not it's just a flat-out no.
One at the end of the town, at the parking lot here in the town hall.
All right, so, um, let's jump back into goals. So, uh, which one am I working here, but I just, I think narrowed it down to those that I think were, are good, important goals. So, uh, Carrie, did you send me some?
In blue?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
What's that? Yes. It was just to me and not to Tim as well?
Uh, just to you, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, so we didn't get that.
Did you send any goals just to me? Did I mess that one up too?
No.
Okay.
Yes, I did, yes. No, I didn't send anything.
Okay, so, uh, you know, I, I guess what I'd like to do first is just kind of start looking at, uh, what I feel we did a little bit wrong last year in developing the goals. Uh, I think that some of our goals were, I, I think that we did a pretty good job making them measurable goals last year. But I'm not sure that we were, um, really focused on, uh, some of the most pressing issues.
Yeah, well, I.
For the town.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think that we did a really good job this year in working with FinCom on the budgeting process. Though, um, you know, uh, I would give an awful lot of that credit for that to FinCom.
Yeah, yeah, they're FinCom's.
I'm not sure we did a whole lot of that, as much as they really reached out to us and.
Yeah, they're fantastic.
And made that happen. They really truly are awesome. So if we go through, you know, we, we had a lot about sustainable budget. You know, I, I have a little bit of an issue particularly not sitting with FinCom of coming up with a percentage increase. You know, whereas la- last year, you know, we said we want to keep it to two and a half percent. I think whatever the reasonable number is, if we want it to be a number, should be developed jointly with FinCom, not in a vacuum.
Yeah, exactly.
But I, but, but I do think that, you know, uh, we, we want to make, we want to ensure that, you know, I, I, I would like us to continue to have a goal of focusing on keeping, uh, tax increase as low as possible. I don't know what everybody else thinks about that.
Yeah, no, I, I think last year, you know, when we discussed it, I, I think the emphasis was that we wanted something that was measurable. And I think that's why we set these so specific, but it's not necessarily practical to do that.
Uh-huh.
Uh, so, yeah, I, I, I.
Well, I'm, I'm actually fine with there being a number here.
No, I'm fine with there being a number too.
I just don't think, I just don't think we, we can create that number without talking to FinCom.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, and, and.
So, uh, you know, may, maybe it's, you know, maybe the goal is working with FinCom to, uh, you know, establish, uh, uh, you know, a budget increase number that we're all comfortable with, prior to the budgeting process starting.
Yeah. Yep. Well, yeah.
I do think the budget needs to remain a top goal.
Well, or, I mean, I kind of worry about assuming a budget increase, maybe we, you know, why do, why do you assume, why are we talking about a budget increase? Maybe we should be thinking about a budget decrease. I don't know.
Yeah, no, yeah.
So that's, that's, that's what worries me about setting a number like that, because that kind of, you know, gives everybody the impression that, well, gee, we have two and a half percent to play with, you know?
There's a certain number that you can hit, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, no, and, and I, I think the biggest thing that was helpful last year was the whole, you know, it says here, the apples-to-apples comparison. And starting the budget process early enough, I think we were able to do that. And ultimately, what happened was people that came in late, it was too late, you know, it was like, sorry, you know, you just, I mean, we saw with the pathway stuff. And there's something else that came in late, that, um, it's just it was too late in the process, you know, and, uh.
So I, I would recommend that we, and I think we've talked about this, uh, certainly in the past two years, for those people who've been on it. But we're working with FinCom on, uh, you know, what is that cutoff date? You know, if, if you're not in by this date, there's no talking about it anymore.
Right.
It's, there's a, it is a hard cutoff date.
Right.
You know, we, we, we kind of sort of have one, but it's not enforced. And, you know, I think if people know, hey, if I don't have it in by January fifteenth, I'm just out of luck for this year.
Well, there are things that come up that are unanticipated, and that's, I think, one of the things that happened last year. For instance, the generator at the police department.
Yeah, but that was actually paid for out of last year's budget.
Well, but it wouldn't have been had it been part, it was supposed to be paid out of next year's budget, but it didn't get paid out of next year's budget because it came out of turn.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you know, I, I mean, I think though, ultimately, we have to have the understanding that those things aren't gonna pop up. But it's, because a lot of the meetings last year, especially later on, kind of February, early March, you know, I don't want to say got derailed, but they really did get derailed because of these last-minute things coming in that, you know, we're trying to entertain, you know, the discussion, but it just, it, it really didn't go anywhere and didn't add much value when we should have really kind of hammered down on the things that, you know, were brought to us earlier. We had decided, yep, these make sense, let's move forward with them. You know, I feel that, um, you know, we unfortunately kind of pushed those off to the side a little bit, um, to entertain, you know, the, the latecomers. And, you know.
And the problem is that the latecomers always get more attention than perhaps other things that are, really should be a higher priority, but were eliminated.
Already eliminated.
Already eliminated.
Right, because even one of the things, um, you know, that I realized in the town meeting was when the whole facilities piece went through. You know, and people just brought up those brand new questions. You know, there were things that, you know, I think we had answers to, but, um, what's his name? Jerry, you know, made some kind of broad statement comments, but, um, you know, like they brought up, oh, well, you know, you're spending money for the fire department just so, you know, people can pee and stuff like that, and why do you need, you know, and it's stuff, things like ADA compliance and, you know, we have women that are volunteers now that need changing airs. You know, there's, there are things that we could have done better to prepare ourselves for questions like that. No, this is why we need it, because, I mean, ultimately, it passed, but, you know, it, it shouldn't have even gotten to that level of, you know, I, I don't want to say silly questioning, but, and, and of course, it was based on another thing not passing or not happening. But, um, but, you know, I, I think what we should really do is, you know, kind of have that cutoff and entertain the important things that come after, you know, the, we didn't know this was gonna happen. But really focus on getting the information out there for the budget requests that we feel, you know, are significant and substantial and should be the ones that, you know, we want them to approve and carry forward. And, you know, and then just, you know, maybe each one of us could take something and go specifically into the mosquito. This is why the facilities, these facilities things are happening in the maintenance. And, you know, just have it very detailed, so when people come to town meeting, you know, they know exactly what is, is on the agenda, what it's there for, you know, what the money's being spent on. Whereas, you know, I think, like you said, the kind of last-minute stuff came in and gets more of the attention. And then the stuff that, you know, like the facilities, people were working on for six, seven, eight months, you know, kind of gets pushed to the back burner. And, um, you know, because we, it wasn't necessarily a slam dunk, but, you know, you go, no, well, that's, yeah, we've been working on that long enough, it's, it's well-prepared. And I just think we could have defended some of those things better. But I, I like the idea of a hard cutoff. I think you need it.
Well, I, I thought the process worked really well last year. I mean, the, the, and the presentation by FinCom at town meeting was.
Awesome.
Couldn't have been any better as, as a way of helping folks understand why we were doing what we're doing. But I, I think the thing that I feel the most lacking, for me anyway, is that we get to next year and we really don't know how we did on an ongoing basis the previous year to get us to that point. Our financial literacy seems to me is very low, mine is, because I don't know how we're doing throughout the year. I'd like to see, now that we have an assistant treasurer appointed, you know, maybe, uh, we can get better, better reporting earlier in the year as to how we're doing. And when things do come up that affect the trajectory of our spending, we know it early enough on so that we can head it off for the coming year.
Yeah.
Because we're, you know, as we go into the, the next year without really having much information, substantive information about how we did the previous year.
Well, actually, Carrie, the, uh, FinCom does get that information all during the, their whole process.
Well, I'm sure they, they probably do.
So I'm just saying, it's not like it's not out there and that nobody's looking at it. FinCom does actually, um, consult with the, both the accountant and the treasurer, uh, on various budget items and say, well, where are we this year? How did we do last year? And they have, you know, they, they, they go back several years, in fact, in, in looking at these, at trends and.
Well, it's not, it's not trickling through to me, certainly.
Well, because it's really.
Or, or the town, it's not trickling, trickling through to the town either. I think that, you know, I think if we, if we had more frequent reporting on an ongoing basis as to how we're doing, some kind of dashboard that they could look at on our new website to say, here's how we're doing throughout the year. I think it would take us a long way to, when we do get finally to approving the budget, people will be a lot, a lot better informed, so. But that's, that's my, my, what I feel as a.
So as the person, as one of the people responsible for the finances, you want to see more reporting?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's reasonable.
I mean, I think, I, I've, I've seen in, you know, other reports from other towns where they, where they show the, they show the budget, but they also say, okay, you're spending fifteen thousand dollars on average for real estate taxes. Did you know that this number of thousands goes to the public schools in Carlisle? This number of thousands goes to the high school? This thirty-seven hundred here is for DPW and Safe Streets, et cetera. Where is our, what is our money spent as, as, as it relates to, uh, an individual homeowner who's spend, you know, spending that fifteen thousand or more dollars a year in taxes? It's, what am I getting for, what am I getting for this specifically? And does it make sense? Does it make sense that we're spending? I mean, everybody has gotten accustomed to sixty-seven or seventy percent of our spending goes to the schools. But, um, maybe we shouldn't be accustomed to all that. Maybe there should be more questioning about the balance of, of all of these things. And, and it takes reporting in order to, you know, to do that. So that's, that's just a personal rant that I have about a lack of understanding of, uh, how we get to town meeting. I thought the process was, was excellent in getting there and, and the participation of all the groups was excellent in getting there. But I just, I just think there needs to be more of an ongoing reporting about how we're doing to, to us and to the town.
Okay.
We still don't report, for example, benefits in every departmental budget. How do you know what the budget is when it doesn't include anybody's pension or healthcare? I mean, how do you know, you know, so?
Of course, the school doesn't, the school budget does not have any benefits.
No, no, no department does. None of the departments do, in the way they're reported. So how, how do you know, you know, how, how do you really get your arms around, is this reasonable? Does this seem reasonable to me? Does this, how do we justify, are we getting our money's worth for each of these functional activities that we provide to the citizens?
Yeah, and when there are these changes, especially in personnel, what is the real cost?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, somebody's gotta have that number somewhere.
I think Carrie, Carrie said that it. I think Kerry, Kerry said that it, that our controller, financial, said that if we included OPEB as well as healthcare, as well as retirement in each of the departmental budgets, everyone's salary would be kicked up by forty percent. Forty percent of everyone's salary is for those, you know, that's, that's a, that's a big piece of change, but it never gets allocated on a departmental basis.
Okay. So, I'm going to summarize that as we need a goal that has to do with finances. And Kate, you, you have a goal that I completely agree with, and it was actually on last year's, not that I don't agree with more of your goals, but adopting the financial policies, but also reviewing our existing policies.
Yeah.
Just a review of them.
I brought the cover of this, which is a huge financial policy that was actually generated for us somewhere else, that we've really never talked about that I'm aware of.
Right.
And I would love to go review that and adopt it into our, our policy handbook. At the same time, I would really dearly like to update our, I, I put it back in my thing. See all these little yellow stickies here?
Yeah.
Those are all the policies that need to be reviewed. And we have some, for instance, the fire department voted to set the preliminary fee in nineteen seventy-seven for use of the new ambulance at forty-five dollars per trip, and then it was updated on two four eighty-one, voted to raise the ambulance rates to seventy-five dollars effective March first nineteen eighty-one.
We've definitely raised them since then.
You think? Okay, so, I mean, I mean, so, things like that, that just, you know, I think we kind of need to update.
Is, is that planned, or is that report in here?
Yeah, that's in your, you know, there's a little...
Which number?
That one was, hang on, let me get back to it, that's number seven.
So, anyway, I, I agree that we need to, we need to do a policy review, it was in last year, we never did it, I think, I think that that's something we should do. I also would like to add a, you know, we need to perhaps hire a fire chief.
You think? Okay, yes. Oh, I, I didn't think about that as a goal, but I, I just figured that was a job that we were doing.
Like, yeah, I want to make sure it doesn't get lost, and then I would say, you know, we will already be supporting the fire chief in hiring a new deputy chief.
Yes.
Because that will have to happen, I think, by the end of next year.
Yeah.
I would like us to focus again on town hall and staff.
Yep.
Just make sure that we have cohesive, staff focus on staff development and communication, and making sure that annual reviews are getting done, and, you know, just kind of focus on the, the management of, of that.
Yeah, that was, that's sort of what I was also thinking about under my town hall rubric there.
This is just kind of going through, through some of mine, I would like us to work with the personnel committee on improving that process.
Yeah. That was our, that was last year's big Achilles heel in, in coming up the works.
Yeah, and I think there is just a, a miss in what the expectations are. I think we think that they should be, that they are doing things that they're not, and I think it's just communication.
Maybe we need, do we need to meet with them?
I do.
Okay, well, so then, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, well...
We'll be here.
Um...
Yeah.
And...
I agree.
One thing that's been sort of in and out over the last several years, I think, is what have we learned from Benfield?
Was that our job, or is that a trust job? Where does that go, that job? I think it's a very important job, I'm not, don't get me wrong, and I really, yeah.
Well, that's the thing, I think, you know, it could certainly be something under the trust, you know, but it could also be a selectmen goal, but I, you know, I mean, I think ultimately, yeah, the trust would probably be a...
Well, I guess it depends upon who can fund it. Does, can the trust fund that type of a study?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, I would think, because, because Benfield is all affordable, right? So, it's directly related to affordable housing. I can, I can ask council.
Yeah, I would think...
Because we'd use the CPC funds.
If, if we can, then I would say, I would think it should be the trust, since it was the trust project.
Yeah, that's, and it is a very important study to undertake, it's not too soon to be doing it.
So, there's one, one on here from last year that was supporting the transition of Minuteman, out of Minuteman?
Oh.
I have no idea how that ended up, other than the testing is costing us a lot of money, so, I think that's one of those things where we have to thank the Carlisle School Committee for managing something that we did not. But it might be good for us to just learn, you know, how, how it's going. Because I, I would hate that to kind of, you know, not that they would let it fall apart, but only, I would hate, I would hate for all that there to be sudden, unexpected costs because of that.
Yeah.
Like there were last year. Although I think most students...
Were transportation costs last year, right? Is that...
Yeah, I think it's primarily around that, yeah.
That's pretty...
Kerry, did you have others that you wanted to?
No, I, I just, I just think there's a, a need for better communication on an ongoing basis with the town, and maybe we can leverage the new website for that, that we're, we're going to be probably having some way of communicating things through the master planning committee, advisory committee, and, and perhaps we should be linked to that so that tied in closely with that effort, so that the town gets to know, you know, sort of what we think of the whole process and where it's going. I think we can co-opt that process.
I mean, fully engaged.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Nathan, are we going to divvy these up as to, you know, having captains of each, or, I mean, what are we going to do to get this done?
I think what I would suggest is that I am going, I am just taking notes, and I will put them all into a document based upon everything, we can review them next year, we will assign somebody to each of these, and that person would be not necessarily responsible for doing the work, but making sure that we're doing the work.
Yeah, okay, that's...
They're the task, the taskmaster.
The cheerleader slash taskmaster.
Yeah. So, communication, town, master planning, I, I would add, just support, you know, I like, you know, like when we set up a new committee to make sure that we're focusing on them a little bit, I would like to add a goal about making sure that we're supporting this new municipal facilities committee, just to make sure that they have the support that they need in this first or second year of getting going, and then eventually, you know, they're kind of on, you know, they're out of startup mode, I think the IT committee still struggles a little bit, getting out of that mode, and, so, I, I would like to add that we continue to support the, the IT committee. Anything else on your list, Kerry? I'll, I'll take a look at your list.
Yeah, no, that's, I just carried some things over, like 40B strategy, and, but most of this was focused on better communication with the town.
Okay.
And better literacy of our finances.
Do we want to have a 40B goal?
Again, didn't, I thought we had that, I thought we had a new committee that was from the trust, that we're going to get that back up and running, because I think that's kind of gone moribund, but the Lip Committee...
That's not a 40B committee.
Well, it is sort of, because it's trying to hit them off by, by putting, doing some design criteria and looking, some, showing what, you know, potential 40B developers would be expected to come up to.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess I would say that if we're going to have a goal around it, it's more of a goal of, in moving a strategy in concert with the Housing Authority regarding affordable housing, and leave it at that, and not have it, not have it mentioned 40B, it's not a 40B issue, it's a, it's an affordable housing issue.
In the meantime, though, we, that Lip Committee, was that our committee? Or, that's our committee, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, we need to get it moving. I guess, but, since I'm one of the members, maybe I should do that.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know who's, I don't know who's on it, but I'm not, I'm not really sure that it makes sense to push it forward really quickly while we're in the master planning process.
Yeah, okay.
You know...
I just don't want it to slip through the cracks, because...
Anything you want to add?
No, I'll get you a couple more things.
All right. All right, I will write these down, and I will send them around before the next meeting, don't comment, please.
I can get this, should I get this to Tim?
Well, if you've already sent it to me, that's good, yeah.
Well, I know you have already sent it to me, I just didn't understand the second one.
Okay. Eight forty, we're ten minutes late, sorry, we were running like an hour early, now all of a sudden we're ten minutes late.
But we're just a way ahead of schedule.
Yeah, this is the last thing, so... Is anything on the table, Tim, that we needed to discuss?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. We're here tonight for a couple of updates and a couple of action items. Mike Myers is here from Tech, who's been working with the Complete Streets Committee, and Melinda Gambino, who chairs the Pathway Committee and sits on the Complete Streets Committee. I'm here on behalf of TSAC. It's a lot of hats. So, do you have in your materials something that says Carlisle Complete Streets on the top, looks kind of like that?
Yep.
Yay. Holy mackerel, that's awesome. So, here's where we are, if we back up, the Board of Selectmen instructed Tim to put in a letter of intent to enter into the Complete Streets process. The next step was to formulate a Complete Streets Committee, which the Board of Selectmen did. The Complete Streets Committee then put out a number of meetings, Tech came and advised us from a professional engineering standpoint, and we drafted a policy that was the next step required by the state, and that policy you reviewed, approved, and it is up at the state, waiting to be scored. And so now we're at this next step, in order to get into the grant stream, we need to supply the state with a list of project priorities, and so what we, as a team, did, and we had great collaboration from everybody who was assigned to this process, so we had the planning board, we had master planning coordinator, pathways, police chief, three engineers, DPW, three engineers from Tech, and what we tried to do was take a kind of a global look at what's going on in the center of town and around town that really needs addressing, and hit first our most immediate pedestrian, motorist conflict areas, and so if you look at this one pager, tier one is those projects, little projects that fall, as the top priority. There are the crosswalks on Bedford Road.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? This, so, one of the things was, maybe it was Tech coming in and doing an analysis of everything, were these priorities based upon that analysis?
Yes.
Okay, and so was there a document that was created for that analysis that...
Yes, and it's, you know, seventy pages long, but, but what, what, what we came out of it was that, not surprisingly, we have to fix some things, and we can improve our system by filling in gaps, and I, as a, as a consequence of this project, it really was a confirming process, which said, you know what, we can do better on signage and notifications around crosswalks, we can't change the locations of the Bedford Road crosswalks, they're actually ideally sighted, but we can make them more noticeable through very specific measures. We can complete the East Street Bedford Road pathway and eliminate the second crosswalk that is so dangerous. We can look at the rotary, which is really big, and trucks go over the edge, and instead of having them go up and into the plantings, create a cobblestone apron according to the best, you know, specs that the state believes works in this situation, see what the remaining pathway, sorry, the remaining pavement looks like, and start cutting down the size of those lanes so that you don't have that fast pass-through in front of the library. When people are taking the rotary towards Ferns, they, if they're going straight towards the library and the post office, they just go really fast, and our crosswalk guard has said, it's almost, you know, it's just ridiculous. So, there's really no super magic in this, other than identifying and then going about doing it right, which was really the, the most important part, is are we doing it right? So, tier one is town center, tier two is getting onto the Bedford Road pathway from Kimball's to Foss Farm and the cemetery frontage, and that reason that's tier two is because we have an opportunity to collaborate with the developer on Maple Street, we are already doing the engineering work, we will have the road surveyed and the pathway sighted shortly, it's just, they're now just plotting it, and with that, we hope that's the ammunition we can use to go to the state and say, this is shovel-ready, and we've already expended these funds to design it. The next tier is sticking in the center of town and really working on the area around the common. We have crosswalks that end in culverts, we have school kids who really can't get from here to there without just walking into the street. The crosswalks are not necessarily sighted where they need to be, and so tier three would be continuing in town center and fixing what needs to be fixed. After tier three, then we can start looking at bigger extensions of the system, a phase two, which we can apply for funds through Complete Streets, but we can also apply through Mass Works, which is the better place, because the funding there is, is up to a million Any questions so far?
Yeah. So, so, tier one is this...
Mm-hmm.
Am I holding it upside down?
I don't, well, this is like a vision test, I'm going to have to, they both look pretty similar, so I have to take a look at it.
Yeah, they have different numbers on the...
Yeah.
The center with the rotary.
Yeah. Right. Two, here's two, here's three. Yeah, this is, that's the first tier.
That's tier one, and then...
So, those red numbers align with the ranking numbers on the spreadsheet?
This. Do you see that? So, you can refer to the description on the Excel spreadsheet.
So, where's number one, then?
Yeah, I think we...
Number one isn't even...
I think we got a different one in our packet.
We got a different one in our packet, yes.
Number, number one is the Bedford Street, Bedford Road crosswalks, it's all three of those crosswalks, and it's identified as that on this schedule, and it's identified as the first item on this summary sheet. The map doesn't have one on it until you look at the large scope, because one is out of the town center, except for the library crosswalk, right?
So, the first one we see on here is number three.
Number two.
Number two, right in the rotary, yeah.
Yeah, the two is the rotary.
Right in the center of the rotary.
Oh, yeah.
I love that rotary design.
Yeah, there's number two.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic.
I guess if I can add one thing, the, we've, we've worked with nearly twenty communities to date with their Complete Streets prioritization plans, and I take Carlisle as probably the first community we've seen that's taken this tiered approach with the prioritization plan... With the prioritization plan, the ranking is, it's important, but it doesn't necessarily have to be viewed as your wish list in the particular order you must apply for funds, you know, going down through the order and getting too hung up on that. The approach to take, it was, was brilliant to take that approach of tiering things to focus on certain areas and not get too hung up on the, the ranking numbers. It's the first time we've seen it, and I think it was definitely well-done.
Our hope is to be able to present to Complete Streets granting authorities packages. If we're gonna fix all of this, and, and we're gonna go fix all of that as opposed to one little thing here and one little thing there.
And that's an important point that Mike brought up, is that we don't have to apply for them in a specific order. We can apply for one, two, and seven, or, you know what I mean? So it's, it's a plan, but we're not locked into a specific order.
And when looking at the end of the one through twenty-five, we're working on the construction cost estimates right now, but I can tell you that they're, most of these are smaller-scale projects, so it's gonna give you the ability to more or less à la carte, you know, go through and select this, that, and really put a few projects together that can have an impact to equate to that four hundred thousand dollar grant.
Uh-huh. But this is more than four hundred, you think?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the whole list?
Yeah.
Yeah, the millions.
Yeah, okay.
But the, you know, these are smaller-scale projects, I mean, some of these might be little twenty-five thousand dollar improvements to go out and approve a crossing that's unsafe today, and maybe tweak the alignment, make it safer for vehicles, too. You'll have the ability here, a lot of flexibility with this plan.
Is this setting a new standard for sidewalk construction for the town?
When we use the grant money from the state, we need to comply with their rules of access and safety, so the pathways would need to be ADA compliant, which means that new pathways would need to be five feet wide, and they would have to have an ADA surface, which can be a stabilized surface like macadam. It can, it can look like stone, but it has to be absolutely smooth. You'll see.
I'm newly disabled, I can appreciate.
So if you go to the Louise May Alcott home, their pathway going up to the house is macadam, and it's a lot less expensive than.
So it has a historic kind of look to it, but it's ADA compliant?
It's sort of like your lawn looks really great if you just stand away.
No, it doesn't.
No. We can dream.
How does this affect pathways?
Sorry?
How will this affect pathways?
I, I, say it again?
How will this affect pathways?
Uh, and, can you narrow that up?
Well, must new pathways be ADA compliant as well?
If, if we use state funds. If we don't use state funds, they don't.
And existing pathways, will they be upgraded?
Nope. Nope. Just what, what, how we spend this grant has to be compliant. So as an example, when we build the pathway on East Street to come towards Ferns, that's a whole new segment of pathway, right? And we've reviewed it, all of the reviewing committees in town have approved it, we have it all engineered and ready to go. You'll recall, we then went out to cost it, and it was just ridiculously expensive because the setup costs were just disproportionate to the, to the run, right? So, that new pathway, we'll, we'll need to go back to the Historic Commission for another review of it, but that pathway will be ADA compliant, as will the ramps around the center of town.
And these green areas, that's not grass, that needs to be mowed, right?
No, it's painted.
Landscaped.
A lot of those would be more like a landscaped area. Meaning?
Well, actually, brings up a question of ownership, are you gonna, it'll be still owned by the town, or are you gonna give it to the butter?
Town. It needs to be owned by the town. You can't use state funds on private property.
And we may need to make adjustments in the future, yeah.
Yeah, well, I just, you know.
It, it seems like a, a lot of what you're doing here is just taking a lot of the ambiguity around, out of what lane you should be in.
It's, it's more of a deflection, an exercise of trying to create deflection, because today you can really kind of take a straight line through there. And a roundabout is a traffic calming device that provides, you know, by bringing the curb at a certain angle, it forces vehicles to slow down as they come into the, into the roundabout.
So this design would accomplish that a little bit better? A lot better?
Yeah, no, it, it's fantastic.
So, and, but then the only question I have is, because bicycles are always just such a problem in the, I don't mean the bicycles themselves are a problem, but it's, I'm always concerned about the safety, whether I'm bicycling through it or other people, because the rotary, there's just no place for bicycles to go. Are these raised things, or how, how are bicycles, are we forcing them actually into the traffic circle with this?
Bicycles and roundabouts are definitely one of the, the bigger challenges. With designing a roundabout, in an ideal world, you would have a, have them come through the road, ramp off onto a multi-use path where you'd have eight to ten feet, get them off the road and bring them back on. That's typically, you know, if you have the space to do it. In this case, at this early stage, I don't think you have the space. Unfortunately, you know, bicyclists, if comfortable and experienced bicyclists, would have to navigate the roundabout as if there were a vehicle and work that way. If they were uncomfortable, they could simply get off at the ADA compliant ramp and, and walk through the roundabout.
The crosswalks take, you know, all users all the way around.
And, and so, I just wanna, landscape area, what does that mean? It means it's raised, it's, it's stone?
Yeah, you would look to raise that area. You can't necessarily paint that area because it's not going to have that physical.
Have no impact in the winter times.
Drive over. Yeah, you can just drive right through it once you get used to it, you won't achieve that, so you can do whatever you want with that, any roundabouts. We've done a number of them, and they are one of the nicest ways to identify your gateway, have that, you know, historic feel. There's a lot of flexibility with the surface that you can do for the apron, the truck apron. There's all sorts of different types of treatments you can use, there's, and then as far as the landscape areas, I mean, the, the possibilities are endless there with how you wanna landscape it and present it as a nice gateway into the, the center.
So the other thing I was thinking about when I was looking at this is just the number of times I've been at the center and you see an eighteen-wheeler trying to get around this traffic, this, the monument, and they're going up onto it all the time. Does this make that more likely?
This, ideally, you know, the first step is to try and preserve that monument at, at all costs. We haven't at this stage, you know, this is just an idea, it's a conceptual level, but as part of the design, as you get into more detailed design, we'll run truck simulations to show the path and look to, if we can cheat out and buy a little more space beyond that, that monument, we'll certainly try to. But we'll, anytime you divine, design a roundabout, it's driven by the truck turning movements.
When David, when Gary Davis was participating in that conversation, he, that was a key concern for him, as well as the turning radius on East Street going on to Bedford. And Mike's firm has, you know, the fifty-two truck templates that they can simulate and, and see what exactly we need to do, but this, this is conceptual. This isn't, you know, you couldn't build it based on this.
Right, yeah. And then, so over by number three here, is that, is there, is there, there's a pathway, there's a sidewalk that crosses East Street somewhere?
Taken that out, you see.
That's no longer here.
There's a much safer location now, because that's, that was very dangerous, you used to.
Here somewhere, wasn't there?
Yeah. You used to cross on the other side of East Street, then you had to go around this curve and then cross again.
Yeah, there's a big tree there.
And, and then, yeah.
Yeah, there were kind of two crossings with a big tree in the middle.
So that's eliminated that problem.
Pass this barn, it's a crosswalk.
Right.
And then you come around here and there's a crosswalk here.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this is, this is highly improved.
Yeah.
Plus, I'm hoping, very often when people turn left onto East Street, they were really cutting into the, they'd take a narrow cut, and there have been a couple of accidents I know of that they take the front end of the guy who's waiting, you know.
Also, the crosswalk was before the stop sign?
Yeah.
It's like, wow, that's awesome.
Have you given consideration to, like, down at eleven, at the, once you got out of the rotary, maybe putting a stop sign there, because the people that are coming from Westford Street trying to get onto Concord Street, turning either, you know, turning left there, there's no, you can't see the cars that are coming through the rotary and around the corner, so you have to kind of take a deep breath and, you know, jump out when you think maybe, you know, the car's gonna go right and not straight or whatever.
Are you talking about at that intersection where the Radcliffe's house is on the right, and you wanna make a right onto Concord?
You wanna make a left onto Concord.
Left onto Concord.
I think she's toward the rotary.
Toward the rotary.
Towards the rotary.
Right.
So you're saying add, add a stop sign here?
Stop sign at that crosswalk.
Right there?
That new cross, yeah.
That heading out of the rotary?
Heading out of the, yeah.
So the challenge there with a, a stop sign is then you could experience some queuing back up into the rotary. You will be able to, with this, the other thing to note, too, though, if you're coming off Westford Street, the, once that gets realigned to a more, we call it a standardized T-intersection, as a driver, you're now looking ninety degrees to each direction.
That's true.
It's much easier if you see the oncoming traffic.
You're right, absolutely.
Well, plus, as a driver coming from the circle, you know, you, you, you actually don't need to turn on your right directional because you're staying on two twenty-five.
Right.
But here, you're more likely to put on your directional because you are in fact making a right-hand turn.
Exactly, exactly.
That might be exactly what.
It's much more intentional, you know, the traffic now picks up speed as it comes around that corner. It's leaving town center and it's heading out, and, yeah.
I've also, when I've driven this, coming up, you know, Concord Street, if I wanted to go left onto Westford, I have sometimes gone around the rotary and then made a right.
Oh, I always do that.
Well, and in fact, it occurred to me that we could have a no-left turn there and make everybody do that.
Yeah, no, I alwa, I always go down there, because I mean, I live down that street.
So we don't need homeowners' permission for any of this?
Not as conceptualized. If we find that the siding of a pathway would be more safe in private property, we will talk to the homeowner and see if we can get an easement. The town has acquired seventeen easements in making pathways.
We have them for East Street, the one that isn't built yet as well, too, right? We have the easements for that.
So, that, that piece of pathway that we were talking about, where we eliminated a crosswalk on East Street, there's the barn, there's errands, we, we, that, that easement is in place.
Oh, good.
Yeah. That was all part of getting the approval the first time.
On the road.
Well, this is also pushing the road so much further away from the house than the road is.
Right, right.
So basically, the prioritization plan includes a lot of the, you know, things that we had hoped to do in Carlisle, but then with the help of Tech, you know, engineering firm, they've added, you know, several projects that are, you know, real improvements to this universe of projects, and that's how we have this prioritization plan. So hopefully, tonight, the next step is to review and move this, you know, approve, get approval from the Board of Selectmen, and we can move on to the next step of putting together the grant application.
So, I guess I just have a question, but first of all, would, would it be possible for you to, I mean, it's not contingent on an approval, but could you send the whole report over?
Sure.
That'd be great. And so, this is, so what, what are we approving if we approve this today?
Tonight?
We're approving the, just this prioritization.
Yeah, and in fact, you really just need to, yeah, you can just, just approve this with the understanding that we are approaching it in these four tiers. So we're, we're really asking you to focus in on four decision points as opposed to twenty-five.
And is our approving this saying, yes, go ahead and go forward, or is, is our approving this saying, yes, go ahead with the grant application for this and then we'll, we'll talk about it more later?
B.
Or are we saying, go ahead with this?
No, 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 this, this is the, is the plan, and then we're coming back to talk about the next step of what we're gonna.
So the next deadline is October first. That's to submit, if we back up from that deadline, that's the deadline to apply for four hundred thousand dollars in construction funding. In order to hit that deadline, this prioritization plan needs to go into Mass DOT so they can review it. Takes them about four weeks to review it, and then we'll need a little time to respond to comments, they'll typically have a few comments, but they, they won't review it and their comments won't be typically related to the specifics of the projects, they're more logistics, pretty minor things that we can turn around pretty quickly, but the sooner this goes in, gets under review, it'll just better position you for that ten-one deadline.
Okay.
The other piece of information that might be of interest is that if we do receive grant funds, we will manage the project, you know, Gary Davis will manage the project, it won't be, you know, District Four Highway trucks, construction trucks coming in and, and doing the project.
That's a good, good point.
Are any, are any above-ground electrical services affected here, telephone poles and that sort of thing?
Good question, it's.
You wanna talk about this one right here?
The reason, the reason for the question is, you know, we, we, everybody always wants to put those underground at some point if they can do it, right? I don't know if that's within scope, if it's affected?
That's very expensive.
It's very expensive, but I would say Gary.
We have that one pole right here in the center of town that everything runs through.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, what we learned in this process is that Gary is putting forward a proposal to resurface a lot of the center of town with Chapter Ninety funds, so this is a perfect time to take these changes and collaborate with him. And if, in doing that, there's an opportunity to bury some stuff, because we're redoing the roads a little, that would be awesome. But I, but to tear the roads up for that alone is prohibitively expensive.
In the meantime, watch out for that telephone pole that's under town.
Which one is that, I'm sorry?
It's, it's kind of like right here.
Oh, really?
There's a, a box underground as well, and so we were talking about scanning it out and seeing if we could move the pole. We have moved poles, it's not a fun thing to do.
All right, so what we would be approving is the concept of the tiers and each, and what's in each of the tiers. That would then go to the state. If the state approves it, then we would talk more about what actual things we were gonna do and make sure that we got the word out to people of what we were doing and get feedback on those things.
Yeah.
Because everybody has opinions about.
Really?
And we can't, you know, we can't take everybody's opinion, but at least just having an opportunity. I just don't wanna say tonight, yes, go forward with this, and then that construction starts without anybody having any ability to.
Yeah, I would like to say that what this is going to do is give us a chance to come back, we'll know if we have a grant, right? And then we'll have to do some engineering, we'll have to do a lot of meetings and reviews. We may have, if we do this right, we may have it in a timing that we can line up with town meeting in advance, so we're with FinCom and we're not coming in at the, you know, at the late hour asking for funds, so that we have a full opportunity to leverage the grant money and do more, that we really, that, that is our top priority. So, that's the, that's the vision, it's, you know, let's, let's do this, let's get this application in, see how we fare. Hopefully, we'll get something approved, but, you know, it's a competitive bid system and we could get zero, right?
So we'd still apply again?
Yes.
Then we would.
And you should know by December.
Which, I think, would let us, yeah, with the, with town meeting, so.
Wanna do that, Karen?
Yes. I move that the board authorize the town administrator to file a two thousand and eighteen Mass Works infrastructure grant application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to extend the Bedford Road pathway network to the proposed residential development in seven.
I think we jumped, or jumped to the next one.
That's not right.
That's not right.
There wasn't a.
I'm sorry, it was, I just assumed that was.
I'm moving to support the project prioritization plan process. I mean, do it a little more generally than that, because I don't think, or do you need something more?
Approve the, the town's project prioritization plan for the Complete Streets.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, yeah.
As presented on.
Presented.
July twenty-fourth.
Board of Selectment meeting, July twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
I'm just quickly reading to see if anything needed to be added, okay?
This is excellent.
All right.
Really excited.
Any further discussion? Second, any further discussion?
No, just thank you for all your work on this and turning it around so quick, this has been great, yeah.
All right.
The next item we have is.
All those in favor?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous.
Excuse me, sorry about that. The, the next item we have is, uh, Mass Works, and so just, just to back up for a second, comple- if you think about complete streets as a way of managing existing infrastructure and managing new projects, it's a, it's a lens of thinking about the safest way to approach pedestrians, cyclists, motorists in our public ways, and that's the thrust of complete streets. Mass Works is different. So the view, the vision was that TSAC would be the steward of complete streets. Gary Davis would do his work in accordance with the complete street policy. We'd, we'd look at, you know, every, everything that we're doing in town, uh, old and new, through the complete street lens. Mass Works is a, is a major grant, uh, uh, opportunity that has different requirements on the town in order to qualify. And I think Melinda, um, so Mass Works is going to be presented to the Board of Selectmen from here out, from the Pathways Committee, because it's considered a significant source of funding for Phase Two, whereas complete streets will become under TSAC and be the lens through which we do our DPW work. Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. So with that, Melinda.
So, yeah, so if you remember, um, we, uh, talked about, um, the vision for pathway expansion at town meeting, um, we did some summer work, actually, to craft a vision statement, which, um, I, I'm gonna share with you later, but first I want to talk about the Mass Works grant application. So we, um, have chosen to apply or to, um, put together an application for, um, construction funds for expanding the pathway from Kimball's to Foss Farm Trailhead along Bedford Road, um, and if we can, uh, secondarily also apply for construction funding to expand on Concord Street from Bingham to the town line connecting our two towns. The survey work was, is already underway, as Deb mentioned, on Bedford Road and two twenty-five. Their field work is done, they're doing the plotting now, and then, um, they should be doing the siding of the pathway. I'm not sure that it will be done in time for, I'm not sure about the timing as far as, you know, having solid figures for the grant application, but, um, that's, you know, that's kind of the status of things now. So what we're here tonight to talk about is, basically, we just, we just need to get, um, the Board of Sele- Selectmen authorization for submitting the Mass Works grant application. We're gonna be working on putting it together over the course of the next, um, month and a half.
Tim Goddard, Pete Gambino, Melinda from Pathways, and me from TSAC are all completing sections of it, it's an online application, but one of the first questions, or the last question is, um, do you have, do you have Board of Selectmen authorization to, to enter this process? So you're not, you're not approving the content of the application, you'll be reviewing the application, but this tells us in the state that we're not just doing this on our own.
Basically, we can check the box that, yes, the Board of Selectmen knows about this, you know, that we're applying.
It is somewhat of a content-free approval.
So, and again, this would be under the small-town rural assistance portion of the, of the program, so it's, uh, certain amount of funds are set aside for towns that are under, um, seven thousand population.
Certainly.
And other towns are.
Ten, ten percent of a hundred million.
Right, so you can apply for up to one million dollars, um, and every three years, basically, you have a three, then you have a three-year waiting period before you can apply again. So, you know, they, they like to have shovel-ready projects, um, they do fund design work as part of, you know, the grant award, um, as well, so it helps that we're doing some of that work up front. What we would want to probably, you know, include is the design work then for, you know, the Concord Road piece, which we haven't, which we haven't put into motion, we, you know, we haven't done that.
That's a possible town meeting item.
Right.
To fund funds for Concord.
Right. So, and, you know, the, some of the other reasons why two twenty-five has been a priority is not, not only has the traffic volume increased and there's pedestrians using that all the time, um, but, you know, we have the opportunity with the developer there to work with them and leverage some, hopefully, some collaboration there, um, and also, you know, that the, um, town is now putting out a request for qualifications to do a feasibility study for the community center, um, at three thirty-eight Bedford Road. So that would also be, you know, an important, um, thing to connect, you know, to have access, pedestrian access to that site as well. The other, the other piece of this, actually, I want to mention that, which is, which is newer, um, in our discussion, is that we would like to construct a pathway from the end of Church Street to the Banta Davis playing fields on the cemetery side. So what we're finding is a lot of students will come down that hill, they don't have a safe, you know, they, they're, you know, taking a risk ta- crossing, and they're trying to get to the playing fields or, you know, this would, um, provide access from school straight to the playing fields.
TSAC has identified that area as pretty critical to fix. We just have, you know, child pedestrians running hog wild to Kimball's.
You know, so we do have that crosswalk at Banta, so that this would allow students to come down the hill and make it down to the crosswalk at Banta and crossover.
There's a stone wall that's, um, an embankment-type stone wall, and there are two significant trees that, according to our, uh, Shea Tree Warden, um, is, are, you know, failing, so. And it's not a scenic road, so, um, you know, those, that will be looked at in that context.
So the process here is that, uh, you need, you need to check the box that says that we know that you're doing this, you have our authorization to do this, and then at what point do we, do we look at it prior to it actually being submitted?
So that's, that's the tricky part, the deadline for this is August tenth, and you don't meet again till August fourteenth.
So we're, we would in fact be checking the box and approving the content, but we don't know the content, but the content is all about the pathways?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
The two, specifically, the Bedford Road and Concord.
So that's.
No more, no less.
What the application reads is, it says, uh, does your town require a certified vote from your Board of Selectmen, and then if yes, you're required to submit a certified vote that you've approved the submission of the application.
And it's a, it's a submission of the application for the funding, not for the design?
For the funding, yes.
Funding, right, yeah, because we don't have the design.
Right.
Right.
Are these pathways gonna be the five-foot pathways as well, or the, because they're state?
And they're further out from town, so there's, you know, there's a more opportunity to. Okay. Especially if you have to build a boardwalk, it's, it's gotta be at least five.
One of the nice things about your application, too, is that as part of the strap grant, you're not necessarily required to have it tied to housing or economic development. That's what that other ninety percent of the grant funds go to, they go to, um, a lot of the private-public partnerships, some of the big, big-scale projects you see, um, in and around the state, but because you're able to tie it to an eighteen-unit development, it's just an added bonus to your application, so it should help strengthen it.
But we can be applying for those funds as just a straight safety initiative.
But then you'll be able to check some extra boxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are all our current pathways compliant?
When we installed them, yes. Five feet wide is what the ADA guidelines, um, require, but there are exceptions, and you can be as narrow as three feet. You have to provide passing areas, bumpouts, uh, so two wheelchairs or two wheeled vehicles can pass. That has to happen within a certain, a number of feet. The pathways hit a driveway in that number of feet, so there's crossing, uh, that way. The, um, the surface, uh, was ADA, was considered ADA compliant. I don't know if it would today. Minuteman pathway in Concord is ADA compliant, and it has a lot of rolling stone on its surface. I'm not sure how it's ADA compliant, but I think that's what we need to avoid, is we need to have a, you know, firm, stabilized surface that functions just like asphalt, but looks like heaven, right?
Minuteman, I was on planning board when that came in, uh, in Concord Planning Board, and that was just gravel that, with a stabilizer on it. And then love sand washed in, uh, over it, and that was a long, 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 long time ago, and I'm not sure that that stabilizer is still.
Well, stabilizer is still in business, and the Highway Department uses it out in the West Coast a lot. It's, it's basically psyllium, and it's mixed in with a, you know, a, a formula of aggregate that, um, is permeable, um, but it doesn't heave with roots, it's, it's very malleable. It's, it's big success story was in Montreal and the, in the, in the, High Park, you know, pathways going up and down.
Decided when they came to us with it.
But when they went to Concord, Concord, you know, asked to not follow the recipe because they wanted the color to be more historically correct. And so that voided the warranty, and that's why that took forever to fix. So we're not voiding warranties.
The planning board didn't, it must have been somebody else in Concord.
All right, so just get us back to this.
Sure.
It's, uh, uh, so this proposed, um, motion does not include Concord Road.
Well, it's incomplete then, so can we add Concord Road to this?
Bedford Road.
Proposed residential de- development at Bedford Road and, um.
From Bingham Road to the Concord Town Line.
Okay, so I'm gonna, uh.
Okay, I got that.
Maybe you can just reference this, because this has.
Yeah, we'll do that, too, but.
Okay, shall I?
Just end it with, as proposed in the Carlisle Mass Works Strap Grant for Pathways Expansion, as proposed, as presented. This will catch everything else in this document.
All right, I move that the board authorize the town administrator to file a twenty-eighteen Mass Works Infrastructure Grant application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to extend the Bedford Road pathway network to the proposed residential development at seven sixty-seven Bedford Road, and the area from Bingham Road to Concord Town Line as proposed in the Carlisle Mass Works Strap Grant for Pathway Expansion as presented to the Board of Selectmen meeting July twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a, one question, are you our liaison? So can we, I think what would be helpful, we're just, we're really moving along, right? We're holding a lot of meetings and making progress, we would, can we include you in our email loop?
Yeah, please do, yeah, well, you guys have, but, yeah, the one o'clock meetings are a little tough for me to get to.
Yeah, I realize that, I know, I know.
But it's mostly town department employees, so, you know, we're trying to.
Yeah, no, no, it makes perfect sense, yeah, just keep me in the loop and that'll be great.
Okay, super.
Keep pumping information back in.
So I just want to go on the record, though, as saying that as part of this, we are also gonna apply for that piece from Church Street to, um, to Banta Davis, that portion of the road.
It's listed in here, yeah.
Okay.
On that docu- it's in that overall document?
And then on the document.
I referenced it in the.
Yeah, and it says, you know, to the, from Kimball's to the Foss Farm Trailhead, which goes a little bit beyond that development, so it connects to that open space, the Foss Farm.
As long as it's on.
It's on here.
Yes.
On that strap thing. Then, then we've covered it.
Does the developer have any kind of a schedule at this point?
I'm not. Pete could tell us, but he's not here.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and before, before we go, I just want to, I do want to share with you the vision statement that Mary mentioned, that we did some summer work and the Pathways Committee, um, came up with this vision statement, it's very brief, so.
The idea was to.
We adopted, we voted to, um, you know, adopt this as our vision statement, so we only thought we should share it with the Board of Selectmen and, was that?
Could you do one?
Yeah, I did.
This aligns us with our complete street policies?
Okay.
Yes, are you too? And, um, and, you know, it's basically kind of, um, if you remember the graphic that we showed at town meeting, you know, it's a fully connected roadside pedestrian network that is, that is an asset to our community, and the, the system will provide direct walkable routes along the main roads of Carlisle, connecting our neighborhoods to the amenities and resources of town center and to our trails. The Carlisle pathways will promote safety, community, health, education, recreation, and the environment.
To the extent funds are available.
I just want to ask you, you hear, because you guys may know the answer to this question, and I don't want this to seem like self-serving because it's in my neighborhood, but who maintains existing sidewalks?
So.
So like Monroe Hill and Nathan Lane have sidewalks that are not maintained, who maintains those?
You mean, inside the developments?
Right.
Or inside the neighborhood or on the main roadway, like the, on two twenty-five?
It's off, it's not on two twenty-five, it's on Monroe Hill.
And it's asphalt on, up on curb?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was installed at the time of the development?
Uh-huh.
And I, actually, I, was there a condominium document, or?
I don't, I don't even live on those streets, so.
Okay.
I live on Virginia Farm Lane, which doesn't have one, but I just, you know, I just, I walk the circle, and I'm like, huh, I wonder who maintains these, because the trees are over them, they're all mossy.
Right.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting we change that, because I don't want my neighbors mad at me if they don't want it, but I was just, I was just curious, if somebody builds a sidewalk.
So, um, yeah.
So the sidewalks we have built, um, um, this is sort of a standard throughout the state, is abutters are expected to remove, you know, objects that are, you know, really dangerous, that, that, something that would, you know, amount to negligence. Otherwise, it, the town maintains it. They take the leaves out, they take the branches out, they take the snow out, but there is an expectation that the immediate abutter will have an eye on it.
For the pathways, or for?
For the pathways.
Yeah.
For the pathways. But there is no liability, so the other part of it is, is that they're indemnified. You know, but if somebody takes down a tree and drags it across a pathway at night, um, they're on their own when, if there's a lawsuit, because you just don't do that, that's willful.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
And the town does, did purchase the equipment to do the maintenance, um.
On the pathways.
On the pathways, yeah, snow removal and the, and then also like cleaning.
You know, the asphalt pathway that goes onto Westford Street from, uh, town center, it's up on a curb and there's a little small strip of asphalt, I know Gary maintains that, and I'm not sure why Monroe Hill would be any different, but I don't know.
Yeah, I've just, maybe, I just assume there's other neighborhoods also that have them and.
Not enough.
Yeah, I know, sorry, but if you, we were to require developments to have sidewalks.
Yes. So we should find out what we did for Hanover, because.
They don't have sidewalks within Hanover, though.
But they paid for all of those sidewalks, right? And I think the DPW took that on, I think, um.
Yeah, because I think it's considered an extension of the pathway.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the town looks at the pathways as different than sidewalks.
No, it's really, it's.
Are those town roads, or is, are those private?
They're town roads now, but there's no sidewalks within Hanover Hill, it's just the pathway along to twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, I just thought, maybe, just curious. Every time I walk my dog around, I'm like, I wonder who does.
I can find out.
What does it need, does it need something?
I don't want to make any changes.
Is it, what is it going on with it?
It's just, it's just completely overgrown with moss, and the trees are low, so you can't, you can't walk on them.
Oh. Should take a walk down there and check it out.
Those are tree branches that belong to the butter's tree.
You know, the town, uh, right away on those pathways has a vertical, um, and a horizontal corridor.